Arizona for Monday, July the 18th, 2016. Carrie, the ball, please.
Councilman Esser?
Here.
Councilman Bunch?
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Here.
Councilman Lamar, or Vice Mayor Lamar?
Here.
Councilman McGuire?
Present.
Councilman Ford?
Here.
Mayor Francia?
Here. When we do the pledge of allegiance tonight, I would like you to keep in mind the officers that have been lost over the past couple of weeks and the families that have to deal with their loss. And to lead us in the pledge, Marshal Stein, Officer Bell News, please.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other rights.
Thank you, officers. Under public announcements in the happy note category, I think many of you probably know in the room that our own town clerk, Carrie Direct, was voted by the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association. The executive board made the announcement last Monday as the Town Clerk of the Year here in Arizona. Call the public, Carrie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, residents of Carefree. I have two things which I'll keep brief. The first one is the sheriff's office is holding their fifth annual back-to-school drive, starting today through September 12th. And what that is, is we basically collect school supplies for the less fortunate children that usually aren't able to afford their own. And so if there's any residents in Cave Creek that would like to donate right next door where the sheriff's office is, we have a bin, a collection bin, and they'll accept anything. They're looking for specific items here, which I'll leave on the table over here before I go. Rulers, backpacks, glue sticks, that sort of thing. So it's going to a good cause. Secondly, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledgement of law enforcement. As you know, the world in which we operate is, it's a tough climate in which we live in right now. And I want to renew our commitment to the town of Cave Creek of providing quality law enforcement services. But the bigger statement I want to make is thanks to the residents of Cave Creek. It seems like we're inundated on a daily basis with cookies, pies, fruit, cards. So thank you to the residents of Cave Creek for your continued support. And I know that I've worked up here a long time, and certainly the town has always supported us as an agency. So again, I just want to renew our thanks and our commitment to the town. So I appreciate the continued support. That's all.
Thank you.
Anna Marcello, Cave Creek, I have a letter for the town attorney. I'd like to read it into records. July 18th, town of Cave Creek, town attorney Timothy Lasota, town council town clerk, regarding conflict of interest of Councilman Ernie Bunch, ARS statute 38503. Dear Mr. Lasota, since taking ownership of a house on five acres at 6440 North Glenda Lane in Cave Creek, assessment number 21616027E, Councilman Ernie Bunch has consistently voted on agenda items that deal in discussions regarding proposed open space land. His property in the Willow Springs Estate subdivision touches, actually touches, on the western border, the proposed open space. ARS 38503 is very clear on conflicts of interest, and under this law, a public officer who has a conflict of interest must disclose the interest and refrain from participating in the matter. Based on this law and the scope of the proposed open place land maps, it's reasonable that Agenda Number Four, the creation of a new ordinance transfer of development rights to facilitate mitigation banking for open space acquisition, will have a material financial effect on Councilman Bunch's property. Mr. Bunch purchased this property knowing very well its location and its proximity to the proposed open space and knowing that he sat on town council. It is reasonably foreseeable that a decision vote tonight will have a material financial effect in market value of his property. The importance of this new ordinance developmental property transfer right mitigation banking to contiguous property owners is obvious. Without the open space program's success, Mr. Bunch's property character would change as new development would occur. There would be substantially altering traffic levels, intensity of use, elevated noise level, air quality, car use odors, and altering of our dark skies, all of such nature that affect the market value of his property in a negative way. Sadly, many of the past and present council member and commissioner members with land ownership contiguous and touching proposed open space lands have voted on agenda items for years pertaining to the state-town annexation agreement without declaring a conflict of interest. I have often in past years expressed verbal concern over such conflicts, but it fell on deaf ears. Sense of the past cannot be changed, but moving forward, ethics and morals and laws should take precedent over personal gain. I'm hereby requesting that you opinion in this matter and consider this a formal complaint. Mr. Bunch should not participate in the decision of Agenda Item Number Four. He must immediately prior to discussion orally identify his economic interests involved in a decision and recuse himself and leave the room for the duration of the discussion. If I am incorrect in my accusation, then I stand corrected and offer a full apology to Councilman Bunch. Respectfully submitted, Anna Marcello. Thank you. I know other speakers, ma'am.
Anybody else wish to speak? Our call to the public is open.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have much as the opportunity to rebut criticism, to ask if something is put on the agenda, or to direct staff to take action.
I guess, I guess what I would do, I would ask the, you, Mr. Sims, if there is actually an issue with Agenda Item Number Four coming up later on, which is the property is probably three and a half miles from the subject property we're talking about here, has absolutely nothing to do with the 4.8 that's up on the mountain. And obviously, it's campaign season, and I've been, she's accused me of this once before, and actually accused me of having the zoning changed on that. My question was, why in the world would I do that with more oversight from the town of Cave Creek if they wanted to build anything there? Would that be smart? The lady has, has for years made accusations of this nature, and I don't believe they're As far as the revised statute she's sitting there, that she handed you, what number of properties touching open space would it, would be required before I actually had a conflict? Or what would the minimum?
Mr. Mayor, this isn't on the agenda right now, but this item is on the agenda later, so I think it might be appropriate to discuss now. If there was an action before council, a specific action before council, dealing with a specific property, you may have a conflict. This is simply a text amendment. It doesn't relate to any specific property at all. If this were a conflict, then every time you all vote on the subdivision ordinance, the zoning ordinance, it could affect any of you who own property in the town. Having said that, you raise good points if indeed this dealt with specific property. Then you might have a conflict unless there are at least 10 property owners in similar circumstances, in which case you could vote anyway. So this is a text amendment. Text amendments can be voted upon by all of you. If the law were to prohibit that because a text amendment might affect one of your properties, I suspect you're all property owners in the town, then you'd all be conflicted. And so, but she's right. If indeed she perceived this as being a matter related to one property, then the question would become, is it directly related to your property? And if so, are there at least nine other property owners similarly situated, in which case there would not be a conflict? My bottom line is, I represent, I don't represent you, I represent the town. And so, I mean, if I were to perceive a conflict, if I thought you had a conflict, I'd ask you to step down, I'd talk to you and let you make your own decision. I don't think there's a conflict tonight because this is a text amendment. If this did cause conflicts, then every time you voted to change your code, your zoning code, if it affected your property, you would all have a conflict.
Thank you. That was my understanding as well.
Counsel will proceed on the consent, thank you, counsel, by the way. On the consent agenda, there are four items, a recommendation for a liquor permit, two cancellations of council meetings, that would be August 15th and September 6th, and approval of the regular council meeting minutes of June the 20th. Motion to approve, counsel?
Second to second, thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes currently have it. Thank you, counsel. We're going to regress back one. Town manager report. Town manager?
Yeah, mayor and council, two quick things. As you know, we're receiving some more GSA. We've completed Spurcross, the discussion was to do the parking lot up there, or take a look at some other roads. Last week, we did a short road panorama. So as we get more, we're going to take, take a look at other small roads, and if we don't do those small roads, we're going to be looking at the parking lot, the Spurcross table, Spurcross Ranch, if that is. Second thing is, right now, we, because we passed in the budget, the rate study group, rate studies for utilities, there's been a lot of discussion in the last week or two how that should go about. It's purely within my discretion as town manager, but the thought was, I would have members of the public, members of WAC, and you could sit down, not as a committee, but as a town managed group, and put together the RFP. That's all we're doing, is make the scopes, the terms, issue an RFP. Before I do that, I would give it to council, council review it, see if they're okay with it. Before people really get excited, it's once we wore the RFP, you have the group that's actually doing the work, that's when you want to make sure that they stay on track and keep everybody informed. But we are, I'm going to establish that probably this week or next week, and then we'll put together that RFP. Before I send it out, I'll send it to you folks. Key for the rate study is important for two reasons, well, one main reason is that we want to do the debt restructuring, a look at that. So the two things that we need to do before we take on that task is the rate study and the CIP review, which engineer is going to do. Hopefully, these will be well started by the end of the year, and hopefully by the end of the fiscal year, they'll be complete, and we'll be looking at taking steps toward looking at our financial picture for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, town manager. We've taken care of consent on the general items. Council discussion in action to schedule a town council special work session to discuss allocation of water to the Cave Creek and the Desert Hills Water Systems. Town manager?
Mayor and council, thank you. As recently, in the last couple of months, we're starting to receive a number of requests for development in Desert Hills. As you know, Cave Creek, we have two water systems, the Cave Creek Water System and the Desert Hills. It's unclear at best, or just solely cap allocation goes to Cave Creek. Right now, Desert Hills, approximately 65% of the water they receive is cap allocation. Concerned as we have, we go into this water crisis, as people are concerned about, we need to decide how that water is going to be allocated. I thought it would be best for the council to have a retreat, to give me direction, give my staff direction when we're reviewing requests for water. We have a number of situations where folks have 100-year assured supply from the state that we feel that doesn't help us buy some wealth. Cave Creek, we have a three-unit subdivision rule where the county has five units, so we have a couple groups that are slipping in between the crack there, seeing their individual homes, and they should be allocated water. So we're having those type of situations. I have, I have. There's another proposal to bring away, bring on a 55, 50-plus subdivision out in the Desert Hills area that would require a lot of water. The standard house for people uses about a half acre, so an acre of water, usually there's two homes. We're not near our cap, but if we keep continuing this pace, a lot of that water that's earmarked for Cave Creek will wind up in Desert Hills. I'm not sure how the council feels on that. I'm not sure what we're going to do right now, but I need council guidance on that. It's kind of a big topic, so I thought a workshop would be best to do that. So that's, I'm asking, and I'm looking at probably September, most of the folks who approve it, taking a look at September. By then, you'll have the primary, what I call the primary elections completed, you'll have a sense of who's going on the council, who's not, and I think it's good timing for that right now. So that's what I'm asking for, that's what I'm hoping for, if any vote.
Counsel, or if it's the town manager, Councilman Esser?
How big is the 50-home subdivision, even wise, in Desert Hills?
I honestly don't recall. I want to say...
Are they large lots, or?
I honestly don't recall. I just, the number of 50, it was 54 homes, so 50, 50, that's why I say 50 to 55, things changing. I honestly don't know.
It's all right, Peter, it's okay.
It's just, you know, as the economy is getting better, people are looking at what they're going to do with their properties out in Desert Hills. It is unclear from our records how cap water is allocated between the two systems, and I need better guidance on that, because right now, we have some folks who are telling no. I have those same folks that want to come before you directly and talk about their particular project, which they always have the right to do, but I think it's better to have a policy or at least a practice, how you want us to handle those requests regarding water. Water, in my estimation, and from what you hear from cap, in the future, you know, it's becoming a concern.
Thank you.
Counsel, we're closing. Any questions? Now. Everybody good? Let's go to the public. Ms. Carrie, anybody wish to speak on Agenda Item Number One?
I have no speakers, ma'am.
Okay, let's bring it back to council for a motion. The motion needed here is to schedule a work session sometime in September, is that correct, town manager?
That would be my request. If you want to do it early, that's, but I'm just thinking after the initial election.
Counselor Ford, you want to start, solve?
I'd call for a motion to schedule a work session for a date to be determined, more likely in September, to discuss water allocation to the Cave Creek and the Desert Hills Water System.
Second. Motion made, and I got counsel. Go forward.
I think it's really important that we do this. It's a hard situation for the town manager to be in, and since we operate as both a council and over the water company, I think it's important that we have a discussion among ourselves in a group to talk about it.
Councilman McGuire, you have the second.
Water is our lifeblood, and we need to understand and plan for it.
Anybody else on council? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes currently have it. Thank you, counsel. Agenda Item Number Two, council discussion, appointment of a citizen to fill a vacancy on the town of Cave Creek Planning Commission. I believe there are two candidates on my right, town clerk?
That's correct.
Are both candidates here? Mr. Kleynops, are you here? Would you like to come to the podium and speak to the council?
Good evening. It's a real honor for me to be here. I submitted my application, just so you would know that I exist, and you would know of my background. I have served the state of Indiana on several special commissions and model ordinance, study groups, and other organizations that dealt with land use and issues similar to some of these that you have here. Preservation of farmland back in Indiana, here is preservation of open spaces, there's trying to understand and maintain town character and so forth, is also something we were involved in quite heavily in Indiana. You're talking about development rights. We also developed development rights in our area to serve the Amish community, so that people that were coming in here and deriving benefit from the existence of the Amish community, that the Amish themselves would be able to realize some benefits because they were actually creating attractions and so forth like that. So I'm here, I'm glad to answer any question. You're welcome to Google my name. You can't escape anything on the internet, so it'll tell you a whole lot about all I've been involved in. And I'm very proud of my subdivisions, you can Google them as well. And I lived in my own subdivision for over 30 years, and they didn't chase me out, so that kind of gives you an idea. I try to get along with people. I want to commend the people you have on your planning commission right now. I met every one of them, and they're wonderful, very qualified people. They would, they could serve confidently anywhere in the state or in the country, and I'm kind of humbled by them because they seem to really be competent, and I would be honored to be included. If not, life goes on, but I'm glad to serve, and I'll be happy to make myself available, especially in my area of expertise, which is land use, land development, philosophy, urban sprawl, and issues similar to those that you're facing here. Is there any questions I may answer?
Counsel questions? Councilman Esser?
Sir, your resume is very impressive. I noted your address, which is on Saddle Mountain. So you're right around the corner, just up around the corner from Kahava Springs?
Yes, sir. I'm on the way to Kahava Springs on Saddle Mountain Road. I'm like the third house off of 26th Street, and the third house to the east of...
So you're on the south side or the north?
The south side. But I'm hidden, I'm behind those big houses. I'm like the ranch house behind the big, the servants quarters behind the big hotels.
Well, at any rate, you have a very impressive resume.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Counsel McGuire, question?
Thank you for coming before us, Mr. Kleynops. Are you presently on Cave Creek water?
No, sir, I'm on a shared well. I've been listening to the water issues, and I know we have some in our area, but I have my understanding is there are some wells that have run dry, but I've been very fortunate thus far. But I know that's a huge issue here.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Kleynops, a question. I grew up a stone's throw from Lancaster County, home of the Amish.
There you go.
I'm quite intrigued by this, because that's a particular culture that continues with its ways, even though everything around it is changing. And you addressed this in Indiana?
Yes, sir. We have a large Amish community to the north of Indiana, in the Elkhart area where they make RVs. In fact, I was a home builder as well, land developer, and my carpenters were Amish, and I would provide housing for them in the summer. And I was on this farmland preservation commission, and one of the things we were trying to do with development rights is the, there were several large resorts or hotels that were moving into the Amish community. One was called Amish Acres. And what was happening was, it was changing the character of all the rural area around it. And so what we tried to do is provide a vehicle so the Amish could receive some compensation for the fact that, you know, there'd be more traffic on the roads, there would be other issues that, you know, crime, so forth, that would have to be addressed. And what we came up with is just, it's a development right. A developer wants to put a hotel in there, well, then he has to compensate the owners. Now, the owners agree not to develop the land, they'll just continue to farm it as they have done, but they are compensated, so they're realizing some value from property. So that's, I don't know what your development rights here, but that's the same term. Thank you for that answer. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
The second candidate is Peter Amundson. Is it Peter? There you are.
My name is Peter Amundson. I've been a resident for over 30 years at Cave Creek. I've had family live here for over 50 years. I've been in the commercial real estate business for 35 years, understand zoning, land use. I think I'm a five-time previous planning zoning commissioner, probably 12 or 13 years. The things that I can kind of offer to the group is that I believe I can bring sound, broad participation that's unbiased. I'm pretty much a conservative person, and I look forward to having another term.
Questions from council? Councilman Esser?
Your colleagues on the commission speak very highly of you, and it's my understanding you resigned as a result of a conflict of some kind?
No, I was, did not, I was not reappointed.
You weren't?
I didn't show up for the meeting. I didn't realize I needed to be there.
Anyway, as I said, your colleagues in the past have spoken very highly of you. Some lessons are hard, huh?
Yeah. I really blame Ian.
He's got broad shoulders.
So I served every term, the full term.
Counselor Ford, question?
I just want to say that I did have the pleasure of serving time with Peter on the commission, and it was a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Thank you, Mr. Amundson. Public comment on Agenda Item Number Two. If there's anyone wish to speak on Agenda Item Number Two. Come back to council. First of all, thank you both, both of you gentlemen, for applying for the planning commission. Procedure is, I will open the floor for nominations, and the nomination does not require a second, and nominations will close, and voting will take place, and the first of the two candidates to secure four votes will be appointed for the planning commission. Vice Mayor Lamar?
I'd like to make a nomination, Mr. Mayor, of Peter Amundson.
Nominations are still open? Okay, hearing and seeing no other nominations, I will close nominations. And roll call on the vote for Mr. Amundson, please. Carrie?
Councilman Esser?
Based on new information, yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
Yes, by unanimous vote, Mr. Amundson, you're back on the commission. Thank you, Mr. Kleynops, for applying. Thank you very much. Proceeding, Agenda Item Number Three, council discussion, approval of resolution R.2016-15 authorizing the establishment of an open space advisory committee. Town manager?
Mayor and council, during the budget process, I had a discussion with a number of counselors, and one of the concerns, or one of the thoughts was to have a more formal committee than what we had before we got in open space. I know the town's looking at a variety of different projects, especially the 4,000 acres, so it'd be nice to have our council help support and move that project forward. I didn't choose to list it by ordinance, because I thought that was a little more cumbersome. I wanted the committee to be flexible to the, to the town council, so they can shape it and guide it as they see fit. So I thought a resolution would be the best. I put out in your packet the basic structure of that, and I'm asking for that to be appointed. Before we had, just when I first got here, I forget, I believe it was Oscar, it was ad hoc, no formal rules, no formal direction or anything like that. I think they did some good work, but I just wanted something a little more formal, have a more direct tie to the council. This committee would be in report to the town council. Thank you.
Questions from council? Councilman McGuire?
Town manager, this is similar, as I understand, to the creation of the water advisory committee. How would this differ from the water advisory?
Water advisory is actually created by ordinance. So it has two readings, and it's pretty, it takes some work and effort to change it, if you want. I didn't want to have that burdensome on the town council. I wanted the town council to be able to shape it and move it to the direction they need to have that committee go. But I just didn't want to have an ad hoc committee, so... But I just didn't want to have an ad hoc committee, so it would still work as a committee in that sense, but I think it's, it would be more responsive, and would reflect the council's directions and desires easier under the structure.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? We'll go to a public comment on agenda item number three. Anyone who wants to speak? Okay, we are back to council on motion. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I move to approve resolution R. 2016-15, resolution of the mayor and the town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the establishment of an open space advisory committee.
Excuse me, a motion made, and I got a vice mayor.
Yes, I believe, and over the thirty years plus that I've lived here, that the citizens of this town are vitally interested and broadly support our open space efforts, and understand the vital commitment that we've all made through the general plan to keeping our, our community rural and beautiful. And I think that it's vitally important as we move forward with our open space negotiations with the state, and that we have the citizens' group that's meeting and kept in the loop, and giving us advice, and working with us towards that end.
Councilman Ford, did you have a second?
Yes.
And I'd just like to all echo first, Vice Mayor Lamar's comments, and add to that, that
I think it's a real important thing, because we hear many times that council's not always making the best decisions regarding the whole town, which I don't agree with. I think this adds another layer of citizen involvement, coming back to the town council.
Anything else from council? Yes. Oh, Councilman McGuire?
I think the, the current effort that's going on with regard to securing the open space, not buying, but securing the open space, through the mechanism of a mitigation bank, is, is creative and potentially productive. I'd like to recognize Vice Mayor Lamar and Mayor Francia, and also currently participating in that is Councilman Bunch for the work they've done, and I hope that that work can continue with the productive results for the community. It's not going to be a quick process, and I think it's very important to have some continuity to what's happening.
Councilman Esser?
I approve, and I also like the fact that under meeting time, the meetings will be open to the public, and there's a mechanism for minutes and reporting back to the council.
Anything else from council? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Proceeding, agenda item number four, council discussion and second reading, this is a second reading of ordinance zero dash two sixteen, two thousand sixteen dash zero six from ending the town of Cave Creek town code by the addition of a new title fifteen, chapter one five six, entitled Transfer of Development Rights As Indicated in Exhibit A.
Thank you, members of council. The, as you said, this is the second reading of this ordinance. This ordinance was prepared by the town attorney to meet state requirements through Arizona revised statute. There was an idea proposed to the town to be able to set aside a large portion of land that could be preserved. There would be a mechanism in place whereby commercial properties anywhere in town that would require undisturbed area per ordinance could in fact, if they did not have the ability to have that undisturbed area, either the property was completely disturbed, or this would give some leeway for achieving more natural retention on site, which the town prefers to see, or even more landscaping where the undisturbed wasn't, would be able to acquire rights on a larger, what would be called, descending parcel. And the town would see this transaction through a site plan process, so the planning commission and council would be made aware of this, and the council would have the final decision on whether this credit was given. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
I have a question.
No, go ahead, Councilman Clancy.
My question is, how often has this happened in the past, and do you see it being used very much in the future?
Councilwoman Clancy, members of council, the issue has often come up every time the town has a commercial property come in for development, where they are trying to meet, what we're told are the most stringent landscaped undisturbed requirements anywhere. People usually find a way, but in some cases, we've realized that it may not be possible, so this would affect a way to put all of the undisturbed area in one place where all the citizens can enjoy it, and give some benefit to commercial property owners as well.
So this is strictly a commercial property ordinance, has nothing to do with homes?
Correct.
Councilman Bunch question?
Mr. Sims, this morning you received a couple of cut and paste emails from a local blog requesting some clarifications and make sure that we were doing the right thing. Can you comment on those? I know Mr. Corwell just did, but if you'd do it again for me, I'd really appreciate it.
One dealt with the reference to, if you go to my, it would be on the first page, the number four definition, receiving area means those lands commercially zoned and located within the town limits. And there was some concern that that should not be commercial, it would only be commercial, because those are the areas that Ian described, that are trying to satisfy your undisturbed requirement, which is very stringent here in the decree. And they do that by, in effect, buying the rights from elsewhere, so commercial is entirely appropriate. Mr. Bunch, I don't have, if there's a second email, I missed it.
Yeah, I think there was two of them that were stuck together, I believe.
Yeah. I don't have. Second comment, I believe, referred to item six under definitions, that the sending area means those lands located in town core, and that is in fact the case.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions from? Okay. Anything else from staff? There is a public comment on agenda item number four. Miss Gary?
Everything is being hurried through, including this artist that just came up, that I don't think many of your citizens, and I think that's why the blog is so interested in it, this transfer of rights, that also will very heavily play into the mitigation banking. Mayor Francia, for the annexation agreement two oh eight, you said, Mayor Francia commented that he hoped that what Cave Creek is doing will inspire others to move forward, to come up with much-needed land reform in this state. Hopefully, what we are doing tonight, and what we have previously done, and will do, will serve as that inspiration. That was concerning the annexation agreement. What did we get out of that? We went sixty million dollars in debt, we bought a dilapidated water company, and we built a new water sewer plant, which most of us will never hook into. That was being a guinea pig, your citizens. A guinea pig is subject of research, experimentation, and testing. Revitalization district, you quickly hurried on that, and you approved, Mr. Sap, having a revitalization district, never been done in the state of Arizona before. So you put your citizens again as a guinea pig of testing. What's happened with that? His agreement was, by December twenty fifteen, he'd have water lines in, and water, and infrastructure to your west side citizens. That hasn't happened yet, I doubt it ever will. Mitigation banking will very much play into this transfer of developmental rights. Again, you're hurrying it through, most of you will not even be on council in a couple of months, you're lame duck, and you are proposing a second reading to an ordinance that will totally affect this whole town and our quality of life, and once again making us guinea pigs. I personally will take this to the citizens. Thank you for your time.
You guys make sure Anna doesn't throw anything at me.
Cover your back.
No, you make a good vegetarian chicken sandwich. That's all we have left is vegetarian food right now. You know what? I'm here to speak in support of this, and I will admit to you folks that, at this point, I probably don't know every little in and out of it, but I will say this. I trust this council. This council has, has helped me with rebuilding the Buffalo Chip. I can't say that it has been a walk in the park, or easy, or cost-free, or anything. I kind of went kicking and screaming into a lot of new areas, but I did it because I trust this council, and I think that you represent the people as a whole, and so that special interests don't play as big a part in some of these decisions. I'll speak specifically about the piece of property that is next to me up on Brenner Hill. I granted the town a conservation easement on my part of the hill where my residence is. I would applaud you if you would do the same with the rest of Brenner Hill. I just think that this council has the wisdom and the foresight to know that if we, as a commercial property, can do something better for the town, hide cars off the roadway, provide more parking, not use our precious water resources for homes, not have me have to deal with noise complaints, dust complaints, bull smell complaints from my business that is adjacent to that area, I would love it. So I support it, and I want to thank each of you for, for your help thus far. Thank you.
Mr. Wynn, I see the beams are being raised high. Any timeline on the?
Yes. That whole part about kicking and screaming, Ian made me get sprinklers, do water retention, drainage, runoff, headlight, glare control, but you know what? It's going to be a better place for it. Ten women's restrooms at the Buffalo Chip. Can you imagine it? And so, October first, they are saying, and I know it's slow on the front end, kind of really runs fast in the middle, they've put that building part up in two and a half weeks. I cannot believe it. I know it'll slow down when we're installing toilets and sinks and things, but I think October first.
I always liked the communal sharing aspect of the...
With the communal sharing, but I've paid too many laundry bills for other people peeing on other people's beds. I'm glad to have more restrooms.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
There'll be more weddings.
Not bad for a lame duck, huh? Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, we're back to council vice mayor, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, there was a comment at the last session regarding the need to modify the code to expressly recognize that the receiving area could be outside of the town. If you remember, in the call to the public, someone said, why is it in there? It's in there because the state statute required it. But I did not make the correspondence responding modification on page one, where I say the receiving area means those lands commercially zoned and located within the town. If we were ever, if you were ever going to go down an intergovernmental agreement to try to transfer outside the town, you'd have to modify that. I didn't do it intentionally, because frankly, the mitigation back that you and the vice mayor are working on is this on steroids. And what I don't want to do is have this ordinance impact that, which is why I didn't make the change.
Understood. Vice Mayor, you're on the floor.
Thank you. I would move to give a second reading to ordinance zero two, zero two oh one six dash oh six, an ordinance of the mayor and the town, council of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek town code by addition of a new article fifteen, chapter one fifty-six, entitled Transfer of Development Rights As Indicated in Exhibit A.
Motion made in second, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, this is really, and it's, and maybe it's because of our negotiation with, on a bigger scale, with preserving our snore and desert, but this is a way that, when you have close calls, when you have, which Ian runs across, which the planning commission and, and our staff runs across all the time, you have close calls, we need a little bit more parking, we need a little bit more room, we've got an odd configuration, they need a little bit of relief. What we've done in the past, because we have such strict ordinance, is just say, no, you're out of luck. The overarching benefit, so we have a little bit of flexibility there now. And I think that's, that's good. That's good for us, and it's good for the town. But the overarching benefit is that Brenner Hill is beautiful, I mean, there's a, I mean, there's a reason why businessmen in this town, responsible businessmen, have donated open space on that hill. It's beautiful. And we want to, that's a great backdrop to have of, for our, our town core, because it, it's not just bars and, and businesses, but it's also the snore and desert snuggled right up in there. And that's absolutely important to keeping this town rural and, and a good feeling town. So it's a win-win. I know there are some who can't understand that. It is a little hard for some to put their brains around, but I think that most people on this town can understand that concept and would appreciate it. Myself, I, I find it, speaking of conflicts, I find it a little conflicted that a real estate agent would want to oppose open space, so that what? We would sell the open space to developers and have more subdivisions, so that what? They could sell more houses? That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem like...
That is, that is inappropriate, Frank.
That doesn't seem like, that doesn't seem like a position that benefits the whole town, but I could be wrong.
Ian, you are wrong, sir.
I would order, Anna. Did you mention anybody by name?
No.
I guess someone has a guilty conscience.
There he is again. You are such a judge.
Okay, Anna, you want to take it outside?
Councilman Esser?
I think the vice mayor nailed it. It's a second reading. I haven't heard anything tonight that changed my mind. I think a little risk is healthy. We live in a changing world, and I've lived here a hell of a lot longer than some of the people that spoke tonight. That's it.
Anything else from council? Councilman Bunch wishing to speak? Councilman Ford? Councilman Clancy?
I believe that this is an overall benefit to the nature of what Cave Creek is, to keep that, that hill from being, being developed. And I understand that the threat to take it to the citizens means a referendum, and also understand that the last several referendums that have gone against the decisions of, of this council have, have failed by a two-to-one margin, and I would expect the same thing to happen again, so if you want to waste time, go right ahead and sign that petition.
Councilman Ford?
Yeah, first, as a lame duck, which I am, I guess, you know, I'm not running again, I'm, I was appointed, and as a guinea pig that's lived in this town for more than four decades, I guess I have a hard time understanding, I only heard certain speakers had that had issues with this, but I think it's a really good opportunity, and I just want to make sure that, as a lame duck, I get my point out there.
Councilman McGuire, I see you're here.
Yes. Counselor, what we're voting on tonight, as I understand, is a methodology that allows flexibility to the council. We're not voting on any particular piece of property, is that correct?
Mr. McGuire, that's entirely correct. And nor are you replacing the notice and hearing requirements of your zoning code. This does not change your code. It just addresses some of the burdens that you have for undisturbed area in a way that allows your, your, your community to amass those in a local area at no cost to you while promoting development elsewhere. It does not waive any zoning requirement.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Clancy?
Well, I'm not sure if I have anything to say. I think it was clearly stated, it's very transparent, and it's good for the town.
I agree with my fellow councilmen. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Last of the agenda items. Mr. Weddington, I believe you're up. Council discussion approval of resolution R. 2016-14, finally determining and adopting estimates of proposed expenditures by the town of Cave Creek for the fiscal year.
Good evening, councilman, and mayor. This is basically the final vote on the budget, the only change that was made from the tentative that was presented. The only change that was made from the tentative that was presented last time was the additional community grants that was added to the council's budget of $10,000.
Mr. Weddington, is the town $60 million in debt?
$60 million? No, it isn't.
Anna, are you being addressed? Is your name, Mr. Weddington?
Forget it, right, Mayor.
No, you get it right. You, once again, throwing out stuff to inflame. We are not 60 million in debt, and you certainly failed to mention that when we were, we have paid it down. What is our debt, Mr. Weddington?
It's approximately $46 million, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Weddington?
No, sir, thank you.
Anything from council? There is public hearing on this Agenda Item Number Four.
Anna Marsolo, as public record will show, Mayor Francia, I quoted from 208 when the annexation agreement was approved. Because of that annexation, you said the whole state would be watching us, and we went 60 million into debt, we paid 19.2 for dilapidated water company, 29 million to build a sewer plant, and 6 million for desert hills. Those were factual. We owe 46 million now because of that debt in 208. I don't think I told an incorrect statement, and I really, really resent that.
Are they also factual? Is it also factual that they are now town assets?
Assets? Could we sell the Cave Creek Water Company for 19.2 million? I'm not sure of that. The time we bought it, it was worth about 4.5 million, and we know how dilapidated it was.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, nothing I said tonight is correct, right? Ernie Bunch says his property is three and a half miles from open space, but in that very blog that he asked Mr. Sims to quote from, he told the readers that he does in fact own property contiguous to the open space. He admitted it, and I was very proud of him for doing that. So, it's hard, and I apologize, but, you know, Councilman Lamar, the chicken vegetarian sandwich, the real estate agent, everybody knows you're talking about. Just use my name, sir, it's okay. Thank you.
Strike three. Public hearing is still open on the budget. Okay, we are back. Thank you, Councilman Bunch, ready to go?
Move to approve Resolution R 2016-14, Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Cave Creek, Finally Determining and Adopting Estimates of Proposed Expenditures by the Town of Cave Creek for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017, establishing the alternative expenditure limitation amount and declaring that such shall constitute the adopted budget of the Town of Cave Creek for such fiscal year.
Second. Motion made on second.
A ton of work went into the budget. The Budget Committee worked hard on it, appreciate it. What this does, it, we set the limitation in the, what?
It's in the town budget.
We set the limitation at the last meeting. All we can do now is, we can't spend any more than that. This is what it is. If the money doesn't come in, we don't spend it, because we can't spend more than we made.
Councilman McGuire, you have a second?
Yeah. This was an effort, given the financial realities that we have, to try to balance the needed services in the community with our income, and it's a tight budget, it's an appropriate budget, and I think it's a realistic budget.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
And let me also comment on the broad spectrum. This is a very tight budget, and it is a good budget, and I want to compliment our financial director, who's worked very hard, and brought with us at every step of the way, you know, budget summaries that we could understand, that we could see where the money was coming from, that made some sense. So, we had plenty of time to look at it and analyze it and work out the problems and bridge some of the gaps that we had. But it is an overarching philosophy, this budget and the last budget and the budget before, to some degree, every community, if you're going to lead, and I'm not talking about just this council, but councils, and I've lived here since 1986, if you're going to lead, you have to have some foresight, and you also have to make some investments. Some of you are lucky enough that you don't have mortgages on your home, but if you were smart, and you bought a good home in a right location, and you had a mortgage on that home, that home appreciates some value, and people would say, that's a good investment. And that's what we've done with respect to the water company. Every town has to have a reliable source of water that they can control, and that they can improve, that they can reinvest in the community, so that you have resources that we can live from. We have to be able to develop our economic base, or we're going to survive. And we learned that lesson in 2008, because there were some of us on Town Council when the big recession hit, and everybody was just about to go under, and we realized that we had to diversify, and we had to have infrastructure, and we had to invest, and it took a lot of effort and a lot of time, and those institutions that were created are paying off, and we paid every bill we did through the recession. We're one of the few communities that did. We've never missed a payment, we've never even come close. So, it is important that you understand that it's that kind of investment, and the investment in our future, the investment of this town being rural, which is more than a word on a sign by a real estate agent, it means open space, it means having beautiful landscape, it means having the great Sonoran Desert as a backdrop. It doesn't mean 30,000, 40,000 homes built out there so that somebody can make a profit off of selling them. And that's exactly why we did the annexation agreement, it had nothing, really, the purpose of the annexation agreement was to keep Phoenix from annexing that land and surrounding us with subdivisions, which I guess some of us would love to see, but that's not been what this community has wanted in our general, in our general plan, and it's not what this council and prior councils, all the way down the road, have wanted for this town. And I know Larry Wendt and others in this town remember when you couldn't get water up half the summer in the town core, and we didn't have a sewer, and we had septic tanks that were completely illegal, and I guess that some folks want to go back to those days, but that's not leadership, and that's not investment.
I mean, Councilman Esser.
Well, Vice Mayor Lamar and I have not always agreed, but once again tonight, he nailed it. He said, everything that's in my mind, I too am lame duck after 25 years, and it's the best budget that I've ever seen. It's easy to read, even a dumbbell like me, and that goes to the town manager. Financing is his strength. Congratulations to the finance director and his staff, and all the people that put this together. If you want to see how far we've come from the days that Steve mentioned, it's a long way. So, it's a piece of work, and I'm proud of it, proud of them, not us.
Councilman Ford?
Yeah, Mayor, I would just like, first of all, I'd like to reiterate that something I mentioned at the last meeting is, I also want to compliment the town manager, the finance director, and our staff. This budget was very tough. The only change that they made since we discussed last time was the 10,000 that we specifically brought up, which I think is very important, and I, as a dumb lame duck that doesn't really have a mental capacity to get numbers right, I believe that these numbers are great, and I'm very happy with it.
Councilman McClancy?
As someone who sat on the committee, it was, I think my second time, was simple. Revenues need to match expenses, and left it up to Peter and Mr. Weddington to take care of it, and just did an outstanding job. It took a while. I know it hurts because there are other things that the town needed, desperately needed in the way of employees, trucks for water, and different things, and you've come up with good solutions, good ideas, and let's keep our fingers crossed that next year, it'll be better. Thanks for the work.
Councilman Mayor, I appreciate it, my staff appreciated it. I have to say myself, Robert, and to be honest, the department had to work very hard to put this together, and I appreciate the council workshops, and I thought it all worked well for us this year. Thank you.
Well, then, the gratitude to the council. Yes. Carrie, this is financial, as it gets, the roll, please.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman McClancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Ford?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
Yes, by unanimous vote, seven to zero, the motion passes. Thank you, council. Motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, council.